Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to our regular Select Board meeting of July 23, 2018, 7:00 PM. And this is the Callahan Room of the Town Hall. All those who are able, if you can join us in the pledge, that would be great. Mark would do. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one condition, under God, indivisible, liberating, just as for all. Do we have a roll call, Brittany?
Mark Stratt.
Here.
Laudishe.
Here.
John Breckholt.
Here.
Adam Hollis.
Present.
John Boyl.
Here.
Adam Walter.
Here. Alright, everyone's here. We have minutes from June 18th and July 11th to approve. And I'll entertain a motion. We can do them separately. Why don't we do them separately?
Okay, I make a motion, we accept a minute from June 18th, 2018, as presented.
I'll second that.
Yeah, the motion's been made, seconded. Is there any comments or changes?
Just a one small one.
Sure.
Under the approval of that meeting and contract, I didn't abstain, I oppose.
Okay. And that's on page three.
Page three.
Anything else? Okay, so it'll be approved as amended?
I make a motion, we accept the minutes from June 18th, 2018, as amended.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you.
Okay, I make a motion, we accept July 11th, 2018 minutes as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made, seconded. Is there any discussion of changes or amendments?
Yeah. Are we on the June 11th?
We're on the July 11th.
Yeah. Under the annual appointments. It says, "John J. Boyl abstains." The board has no.
Okay. That's on page three?
Yep.
Second paragraph. Under the annual appointments.
Yeah. Page three of five, yeah.
Any further amendments, changes?
I make a motion, we accept July 11th, 2018 minutes as amended.
I have a second.
Oh, second.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to accept as amended. Any further discussion on the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Yeah, this is a public address. This is a section for a public address to the board. This is a time when the public may address the board on any item listed on the meeting agenda or on any issue or matter of town. If you intend on addressing the board, at this time, we ask that you do the following. Please identify yourself by name, address, or the company, institution you represent. The public address to the board segment will last no longer than 30 minutes. Please make your comments concise and try not to repeat statements made by others. Please address your comments to the board chair. Discussion or debate on any issue may not take place at this time. Questions on procedural matters may be answered by the chair or their designated. Please be cordial and respectful of others. If anyone wishes to be recognized when an agenda item is discussed by the board, please make the request at this time. This request may be granted by the board chair. Address comments to the board chair and be concise. Is there anyone who would want to address the board at this time?
Hi. Richard Hall, 164 Green Ridge Drive. If Mr. Chairman and I can be recognized for number 15, in case there's any questions, go right out or out.
Is there a particular one on number 15?
Well, actually, for the Eversole's transmission line, but also Green Community's ground.
Okay.
Okay. Just in case there's any.
Under 15, if there's a comment after we get done discussing it, just?
Yeah, sure.
And then the other thing was, last meeting, there was a caption about the number, which is on the mounting park report, the prior pollution. And one of the board members was looking at my group and making thinly-fell allegations that I was possibly one of the people that leaked that email. I just want to put on the record that I had absolutely no knowledge of that email until it was brought up in the meeting last week. Thank you.
Thank you.
John, do you want my comments now or you want?
I will ask you, if that's okay during that segment, because that's why we invited you here. And if anyone is here in regard to a particular item, such as the alcohol license transfer, will be recognized. So, anyone else? Okay, thank you. So, we open as a licensing board. And at this time, there's a request for two transfers of alcohol license at Green Ridge Plaza and Paesano's Pizza. And I see that you're Mr. Greerson.
Yes.
The attorney for those that are requesting the transfer. And Mr. Mazzio's here as a coordinator. So, if no one has a problem with it, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Greerson for a presentation on this. You explain it briefly to us. We can take these one at a time. If we do, it's, the variety store can be first and the pizza probably could be second. If that's okay with you?
That's alright.
Okay, sir.
So, thank you for having us here tonight. We have Mr. and Mrs. Patel, who are in the process of purchasing Green Ridge Plaza and Paesano's Pizza, along with the entire building. With the variety store, their plan is to operate it in its current capacity, invest a little bit of money, do some upgrades, but pretty much keep it the same operating business. With the package store, Ms. Patel will be the manager of that operation, who will work there along with Mr. Patel, Fadesh. And that's pretty much their intention. They should be closing sometime in August on this deal, at the local license application goes through. Is there, is there any questions for Mr. and Mrs. Patel or Mr. Mazzio?
I will prepare up to the board for questions or comments. Mark, you have anything?
I, just, other businesses like this, if you're very familiar, running businesses like this?
Oh, yes. Both Mr. and Mrs. Patel have run a grocery store in Connecticut where they had a liquor Mr. Patel currently works as a manager of Dunkin' Donuts, as well as Mrs. Patel. So, they've both had experience operating businesses handling their license.
The only other thing I'd have to say is that Mr. Mazzio is kind of a good neighbor down there. I hope you continue that down there. Be warned that if you get complaints, you'll have to come back in front of the board, which we haven't had to do with Mr. Mazzio, but just be good neighbors.
Of course.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I just wanted to, just pick a thing. On the application, halfway down the front page, there's a question. Granted under special legislation? Yes or no? Are you with me, Mr. Attorney?
Yes.
Okay. And you've checked no. Yet, this license was granted under special legislation.
But this is not applying for a new license. This is a transfer.
But the license was granted under special legislation, the original?
Original license, yes.
Alright.
Understood. But my understanding is, it's only applies if it's applying for a new license. So, that's why the no was checked.
I don't understand that, but this license carries with it because it was enacted under special legislation by our great general, our great general court, and signed by the governor, that this license is not transferable to another location, physical location.
Correct.
But is transferable to another business entity. And there may very well be other minor restrictions on this license. It would do you well to perhaps confer with Attorney Muse Faro, who drafted this legislation, to know what they are.
Right.
So, you won't come back and say, "This board didn't warn you."
Right.
If there are any other restrictions.
Yep. I think, we've taken a look at that, and I think we're in the clear.
You say so. I'm all in favor of it. Say, to the Patel's, welcome to the Dalton business community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other, any other questions?
Welcome to Dalton also.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Okay. So, why don't we vote on this transfer, this particular one? So, I have a motion?
Okay. I make a motion that we accept a transfer of license from Mr. Mazzio to OHM Variety LLC.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there further discussion? You all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. That's number one. So, the second one, is there, well, I'll let you, go ahead. This is, this is for the pizza?
Yes, this is for the, the serving of alcohol. So, again, they, they intend to maintain the business as stands. There may be a menu change.
Yes.
But, other than that, I think there, there may be some minor renovations, but they plan to continue the business as is. I've, I've spoken to Ms. Patel. She intends to take the online pitch course for serving of alcohol for that purpose. Other than that, pretty much the same general information as the prior local license application.
I, will the, will the business we shut down for a period of time, at the time of the transfer, to do any renovations or whatever that the Patel's may want to do?
No.
Are the hours, and I don't remember when the statement, the hours going to be the same, is there?
I think yes.
Anyone else? Okay. Anything else you would like to add?
No.
Entertained motion, then?
I make a motion, we accept a transfer of license from Mr. Mazzio to OHM Pizza LLC.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there further discussion?
Well, our administrative assistant has been to clarify the hours of operation for purposes of getting on the license.
Okay.
And I think that's particularly for the restaurant.
For the restaurant. Okay. The hours of operation?
Currently, they were working for four to nine, but we are trying to extend till lunchtime in the morning also, like starting by 11:00 to 9:00 PM.
11:00 AM, John? 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
Seven days a week?
Seven days a week.
Again, traditionally, we put all the legal hours you can be open on every license.
Okay.
Which is eight in the morning to two, 2:00 AM in the morning. And they can, define their own schedule. I don't think anybody's open that schedule, but.
Ken, what do you need?
If you're not fast towards pleasure.
Yeah, it's just, the gate's coming back here.
And asking for extensions?
Asking for extension, and publish it, a new hearing, and all that stuff. So, just say all the legal hours you can be, then you're all set. Open as early as you want, or not.
Or within the timeframe.
In that timeframe.
In that timeframe.
Which for a restaurant.
Your intent is to be from 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM at this time.
And there's a later open an hour on Sunday. 10:00, I'd say, 10:00 AM.
For serving alcohol, I think it's 10:00 AM.
Yeah, 10:00 till noon.
Yeah.
That'll be on the license.
Yeah.
Put down all of them.
You good with that? Okay. Are there comments from the board in comparison? Okay. Anything else?
I.
That would be them.
That would be them.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And welcome to the neighborhood. Okay. Now, the Appalachian Mountain Club has a local management plan that was given to us in our packets, which was pretty lengthy. And, but very informative, if you were able to, to go through it at any length. And I ask that Andrea Lasser and Margaret Cahill come to the meeting to explain what it is you actually want, or what we can do. I guess that's what, what I should say. Margaret, if you can introduce your guests?
Yes.
That would be great, because I know that.
They're the ones who are going to answer your questions.
Right, right.
Because they're the ones who produce this document.
Okay.
The role that Andrea and I have is, we did the application for the AT community, so that Dalton would be designated AT community. And that came out of the Grow Dalton initiative. But Jim Pelletier and Cosmo Catalano are the ones responsible for this document. And when, the other thing that Andrea and I do is, we hosted their volunteers, people who actually do the work at the shelters, on the trail. And I tell you, we were wild when 80 people showed up for the meeting in February here in Dalton. And then, again, the next year was even more. So, that's how many people are coordinated by this plan to maintain the trail in Massachusetts.
I believe there's certain people will volunteer for certain sections of the trail. Is that still the case?
Yes.
And they have certain responsibilities for that section?
Yes.
Clear and low downs?
Yep. And in fact, Margaret and Andrea and several other people have fallen, taken over responsibility for maintaining the trail through town up to Grange Hall Road. Had that responsibility for a year now, I think?
Yes. So, as far as what do you, what do we want, I think it's basically a courtesy that you're informing us, informing the town of Dalton, what exactly is going on related to the trail in the town of Dalton.
Yeah, maybe if I could say a few words about the plan and what I have in mind here. So, again, I'm Jim Pelletier, Chair of the Volunteer Committee. Cosmo is our volunteer coordinator, post-chair of the committee, and he's the author of the current version of our local management plan. So, he knows a lot about what we're doing here. In any event, the plan is some decade or more old at this point, and needs to be updated. There's a formal process that we go through to do that, that includes our partners, the main partners being National Park Service, Department of Conservation and Recreation, and Appalachian Trail Conservancy. So, it is a fairly extensive document. It covers, I'll just highlight the main areas that it covers. The general organization and areas of responsibility for each of the partners, and the planning process that goes on around that, how we manage and take care of the physical trail itself, meaning not just the trail, but trailheads, parking lots, signs, overnight sites, all of those kinds of things. We have a chapter that's on emergency response, and this gets into things where we have some responsibilities to respond, but also state agencies like police organizations, fire departments, local fire departments, state police, environmental police, and so on, have responsibilities. We also have a, a section on the lands that surround the physical trail, what we call the corridor. We have people assigned to monitor those lands, make sure that they're not being misused, the boundaries are clear, that people know where they can and can't hunt, and so on, and that sort of thing.
Is that the timber management zone?
There is a section on resource management. Thank you, that's the next section. So, yeah, there's a whole section there about timber management, how we monitor rare, threatened, endangered species, dealing with wildlife, timber management, help me out here, Cosmo, what else? In that. Cultural resources, scenic resources, those kinds of things. Biological resources. And the biological resources, and open area maintenance, those kinds of things. We have three special management areas covered in the plan. None of them involve Dalton, but there's a section in there on Upper Moose Pond, Sages Ravine, and Terringham Cobble. There's a whole set of maps that go into the plan that define where the trail goes, corridor, parcels, overnight sites, and all those kind of things. And that's kind of the overview of it. So, we want to give the towns that, that the trail passes through the opportunity to look at this document, sense what things might be of interest or of importance to them, be it our interaction with the fire department, or police force, or, or hiker issues, whatever it might be. So, you have an opportunity to provide input to our update to the plan and make it the best plan that we can do. So, this is a two-year project to do this whole thing. We're anticipating getting comments from you all and all the other towns and major partners by the end of July. And I have a month to put it all together with all the inputs we have before we bring it to a regional partnership meeting where all the trail clubs in the Northeast get a whack at this. So, that's. And our part, and our part service, yeah. DCR. So, it's really largely up to you all what you'd like to look at, and where you might have questions or comments or input. We welcome it all, and appreciate it whatever time.
Can we give these comments to you now? I don't have anything more, I didn't, but after I went through this document, there were things that I thought might apply to our town.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, we can take comments now, or we have forwarded a link to the Google Doc, and you can make comments directly in that if you'd like, but we'd be happy to engage in discussion at this point, or take comments, whichever, whatever you're. I'd like to hear your comments, but now.
Yeah, the, say the parking areas. The way I look at it, there's maybe three here. Grange Hall Road, Depot Street, and Gulf Road. You know, as for where the trail comes out, crosses the streets and whatever. Grange Hall Road, and I don't know, I don't, I haven't walked the trail in quite some time, so I don't know the signage that you have everywhere. But Grange Hall Road is, is a remote area where a lot of people do park because the K-wood Shelter is, is up there. And, but it's not the best place to park because it's so remote from town, it doesn't get checked. So, I don't know of some type of, a warning, so to speak, a sign, or some informational thing saying, you know, "We suggest you park in these other areas, these other designated areas." I mean, Gulf Road's probably the best.
Do you have other additional comments or other parts of town government you'd like to look at specific sections?
Okay.
Pretty easy, just to give access to that one.
Anything else from any room?
I think it was, if you notice in the beginning, it's, this is just an aside, but cap couch, whom I didn't know, but those pictures in the crane room is instrumental in finding the trail in Massachusetts.
Yes.
In the twenties.
Yeah.
Just one observation, it seems like there's a lot more people hiking that trail now than there used to be. That's like.
That's for sure, yes. Very much so. It's very, yeah. Yeah, that, that is a subject that we've made quite a few changes in the management plan in that area, that are recognition of that fact, and that are prior management methods to deal with that will not work on full. So, yeah, we tried to address that with some other approaches, things to manage the increased traffic.
Being an Appalachian Trail community, that we are, and I know already you probably are, Richelieu, so, what responsibilities do we have as a community to the trail?
Well, it's, the businesses have been key supporters, and by being a community, we get more publicity. The Appalachian Trail Conservancy announces the communities, and it's just a more formal relationship with all the different entities in town to be receptive to what might improve things. Just in the little time we've been doing this, we've gotten input from hikers that we've been able to address, made some changes with signage, there was some confusion in a couple of spots. We did the postcards, because they said, "We'd love to send a postcard from Dalton," and we landed it all these different places, and there were no postcards.
Oh, okay.
So, we got postcards made, and we're looking to do round two of those. So, as far as what's the town commitment, it's to really work with, work as a community to not only support through hikers, but hopefully, we want to have programs that will encourage day hikers, and let people know that the, that the trail exists. We're still finding people who don't know that. And working with schools, Jim works with the school, as he said, he does a map with Craneville. Several of the teachers have participated in professional development, which allows them to include information about the trail in their regular curriculum.
Yeah, if I could add to that, there, there's certainly an expectation that the town will contribute to the AT community, and in Dalton's case, that's been going on for decades. And that was a very strong part of the application of Dalton, with individual maintainers. K-wood was prior chair of our organization, and even after she was chair, she remained the coordinator and all those kinds of things. But since the initiation of Dalton becoming an AT, or officially a community, it's been really pleasing to see you folks have upped your game a bit, with taking on direct maintenance for a section of the trail. And as Margaret mentioned, I think, early on, it's been wonderful to have the AT community basically organize and manage our annual volunteer gathering, which we have in early February, and to be able to use the St. Agnes School facility for that event. So, it's been really wonderful to get that kind of support from the community, so that we can have a productive meeting.
Well, the AT's using the new sidewalk on High Street, though, so.
Yep. Yes.
Is that trail, is that called Trail Douglas, or what?
Right.
Yeah, Herb and Trail, yes.
The sign embedded in the sidewalk is very excellent.
Where, on High and North?
On High.
A lot of hikers taking pictures of that. Yeah.
They're throughout the whole sidewalk, every 500 feet, there's a marker.
Really?
A bronze marker?
Yeah.
I'll have to walk that section of that trail.
I'll try to watch this one.
Any other questions or comments? Thanks for being here. Appreciate that. I hope, I hope we helped out and hindered.
No, thank you very much. And if something comes up, we're here to help.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Back in March of 2017, we were approached by Linda K. Moses of Kirchner Road, who's here with us tonight, along with her husband. I'm sorry, sir, I don't know your first name.
Evan.
Evan.
And his last name's different, too.
Okay. Evan.
Salinger.
Thank you, sir. But at any rate, at that point in time, it was suggested that Dalton become a safe and accepting community and supported diversity. And since that time, we haven't done anything with regard to that. So, it's been on our list of items for our agendas, and the reason that we invited you here was to get some guidance and some suggestions, a little bit more information being that it's been so long. Now, I went, I went online, as I was telling you earlier, and I, I looked up and saw what Pollo did, and you say it's similar to what Great Barrington did.
Similar to Great Barrington. I think North Hampton has also adopted a policy as well. So.
I'll give you the floor, and you can explain what you know, and.
Do you mind if I just sit?
You can sit.
Great.
You can sit.
I am not a lawyer, so the information that I gave you from Great Barrington is simply their preliminary draft of what they hoped to be able to do. So, my suggestion would be to research that as, as well as North Hampton. And I think there are other communities in, in Massachusetts that have also adopted similar policies. I do want to just back up a little, because the, the reason. I do want to just back up a little because the reasons that I wanted to approach you with this, the main reason is that there's been a guiding quotation in my life that has activated me again and again. And it's Edmund Burke's phrase, "The only thing necessary for the triumph of evil is for good men," and I have to add in, "and women," to do nothing. And so I've tried to hold that in front of me when I'm confronted with issues that I find disturbing. And one of those issues, of course, is the way that currently that immigrants have been treated in our country. None of us would be here, except for the fact that our ancestors immigrated here and were treated fairly most of the time. And I think that it's important to continue that tradition, and that's why I approached this board. I think it's important not just to feel that we can treat immigrants fairly, but to speak out. And one of the ways that Dalton can speak out is to adopt a policy like this. So as far as additional information and guidance, all I can say is I'm coming from my heart and from my sense that this needs to happen, that every community in Massachusetts and hopefully in the country can speak out and can speak out with a loud voice. I think it's essential now. Too many people who want to be part of our country are being treated very unfairly and cruelly in many instances, and it has only gotten worse since March 2017. So I hope that is helpful in to some degree, and I just encourage the board to pursue the research into this. I'm grateful that you asked me to come in, I'm grateful that you're considering this, and I hope that after I leave the room, at some point, your conversation will continue on this, and that if you need me for any reason whatsoever on this issue, that you feel comfortable getting in touch with me again. I'm not sure how much help I can be. I think it's important that a lawyer also be involved, simply because these are, the document I gave you from Great Barrington was produced by a team that had a lawyer on board, I believe, and you want something that's going to hold water.
Well, that's what I'm trying to, personally trying to figure out, is accepting a resolution such as this, or such as Holyoke's, or whoever, similar.
Or however you build it.
What does that do for the town? It gives it a sense of, obviously it may give us a sense of unity or direction, but is there, is there further repercussions, I guess, that I have not seen?
And I haven't seen them either. This kind of resolution is not saying, "If ICE comes to town, then we're going to, as a town, refuse to allow them to do anything." That's a whole other position to take, and it's a position I would love to see happen, but I don't think that Dalton is ready to do that, or that the police of Dalton are ready to do that, or the state police for that. But it is a statement of policy, of intention to protect the population of Dalton in all its diversity, that I think is meaningful. Whether it has legal standing in any way, that's something to ask a lawyer. Because I personally don't want to see any negative consequences for the town of Dalton. I, at this point, what I've suggested only has positive consequences.
I don't see where it would be a negative consequence, given what I've read on this one resolution from Holyoke.
And I do have, I have copies of the letter that I sent, if you don't have, do you have them?
No.
Let me just bring them up. I'm sorry.
Go right ahead.
Thanks.
Is this the original letter?
That is the original letter, so you'll see the date at the top.
Well, as I commented before the meeting to you, that, I just want to try to get some direction on what we could do down the road here, and discuss authoring a resolution that would fit the town. Honestly, from what I read from Holyoke, it seems like that would fit any town in the county, or any town.
It's a good one.
Any town in the nation. It's somewhat generic, but yet specific on what it means, but I don't understand what they were saying, that it only covered certain groups of individuals of ethnicity. I thought it covered everybody. Maybe they changed it since, when they had that debate in the city council, I don't know, but...
When was that passed in Holyoke?
Three years ago?
So...
I think three years ago, I thought it was...
But in that time period, there have been a number of towns who've adopted similar policies, Great Barrington being the closest one as far as I know. I don't know what the Lennoxes did, and I have no idea about Stockbridge or any of the other towns in Berkshire County. But it's certainly easy enough to contact the boards in those towns.
And that's probably what we're going to end up doing, I would think, and it'll be a process.
Thank you so much.
But, you know, just trying to get the ball rolling, I guess, or at least I'm trying to get the ball rolling one way or another, whether it's voter in or whether it's voter out. I don't know, but it's at least being discussed.
It's on the road now.
Right, right.
I really appreciate you reviewing this.
No, no problem.
It means a lot to me, and I think, I think I'm just the tip of the iceberg. I think good people everywhere are concerned about this issue, at least I hope so. And not everybody is willing to put it on paper and ask for help, and that's what I'm thinking.
Okay. I'll leave it to the board members, other board members, if they have comments or questions.
I think it's very well worth looking into and see what we can do.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Oh, thank you for coming, and it shed a little light on what maybe we should do.
I hope so.
Thank you.
Thanks. A nice set of chairs.
Yeah, better than last night. Okay, we have, we have some appointments. First is for the Dalton Library Trustee, and in a memorandum from Mr. Walto to us dated today, says, "I hereby recommend for your ratification the appointment of Thomas C. Condon of 67 South Street to the Board of Library Trustees until the next annual town election to be held May 13, 2019. Mr. Condon will fill the seat of Mark S. Rancourt, who did not run for reelection. Thank you for consideration of this appointment."
The motion, sir.
Yes, please.
I make a motion we appoint Thomas Condon of 67 South Street to the Board of Library Trustees until the next annual town election to be held on May 13, 2018.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none at all in favor?
I...
Pose, recentsions? Thank you, Mr. Condon. The next is the BRPC, the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission, appointment of the alternate delegate from our town. And the actual delegate, the primary delegate is Mr.?
Caleb Darby.
Caleb Darby?
Yeah.
Who is the, is he the chair?
No, he was the chair.
He was the chair?
He's not the chair now.
Okay, but he's still...
He's an active member, he shows up every meeting.
Okay. So, at this point in time, because we voted him last, last meeting, Mr. Hollum, I'll get to that. Mr. Hollum was kind of voted in as alternate delegate, and I'm not, I'm not sure if he wishes to continue in that regard, but I want you to comment on that.
Well, if somebody else wants to do that, that's absolutely fine with me. I'm on a lot of committees now, a lot of, particularly on Thursdays is a very busy day. I mean, I'm willing to continue to do it if no one else steps forward, but if somebody else would like to volunteer, that would be, that would be very fine with me.
I'll leave it to the other three board members if they wish to do that.
I think you're doing a great job, Evan.
I was afraid you were going to say that.
I think that's a yes. So, unless, or, John? Okay, John, no, that's me. But Ed, thank you, if you can do it, it would greatly appreciate it.
Well, first of all, I only went twice in the last year because Mr. Darby shows up.
Well, that's why I...
There's not that many meetings, so...
Was there eight meetings, or?
Seven, I think, that we had.
But you're there in the event that...
That's correct. He would call me, which is what happened.
Okay.
If you can't make it.
Well, I don't think we need to vote on this because actually we voted on it last week.
And I was actually already sworn in.
And you've been sworn in.
Because I didn't know it was going to be on time.
Okay, so, we're done with that, pretty quick.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Okay. Oh, do we have to turn a piece of paper in, for chance?
Yeah, we'll, we'll fill that out. Julie hasn't already done so.
Okay. Yeah, when we adjourn the meeting, we'll sign the papers, and do whatever. Okay. So at this point in time, I'm going to open as the sewer commission. It is 7:49 PM, and we have, well, several things to talk about. I'm going to, is it okay if I go out of order here, Ken? Is it any reason to go in the order of the...
No, sir.
Because we have, we have two visitors here, David and Royanne Wendling from Dalton Division Road, who wrote the board a letter in regard to Dalton Division Road. And as everyone knows, we're looking at working on Dalton Division Road within the next 10 years, hopefully, or sooner, we'll see. But I'll read the letter for the, for the record, and it's dated June 29, 2018. It says, "Dear John Bartels and the Dalton Select Board, it is our understanding that there is an upcoming select board meeting on July 23 to discuss sewer matters for the town. We reside at 427 Dalton Division Road and have done so for the past 24 years. We understand that most of the road is already, of most of the road already has sewer except from Scholies Drive to the Tamarack House. This, of course, is where our home lies. It is also our understanding that Berkshire Gas Company will be extending their gas lines down the entire length of Dalton Division Road in the near future. This would be an excellent time to consider completing the sewer line. We are requesting that a discussion of completing the sewer line the entire length of Dalton Division Road be added to the select board agenda on July 23, when you mean to discuss other sewer matters. Thank you for your time and consideration. Respectfully, Dave and Royanne Wendling, 427 Dalton Division Road." Now, that, they also sent me the letter from Berkshire Gas, where they said, they'd sent it generally to all the homeowners on Dalton Division Road, and, to the homeowner, and this is dated April 5 of this year, and it says, "As you may know, Berkshire Gas currently has no gas main in front of your home. As part of a system enhancement project, Berkshire Gas has plans to extend our main to connect the two ends during the 2018 construction season. This means that you will now have the opportunity to get gas service to eat your home. The construction is scheduled to begin in early July and last approximately one month. Now, to my recollection, it hasn't started yet. I haven't even seen a Berkshire Gas truck down there. If you have any interest in looking into converting your home, eating, blah, 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 let us know. But at any rate, I wanted to, I wanted to put that into the record as well, saying they do have an intention of doing some construction down.
Can you respond to that?
Go right ahead.
At the last conservation meeting, Berkshire Gas came, and they got all their permits aligned, and they're, they're ready for the conservation issue. They're ready to go.
Okay, okay. Well, that answers that question. John Roughly, our highway superintendent, is here, kind of to shed some light on sewer on that road, and I'd just like to ask John a few questions, and just looks to answer questions. But John, is it correct that there's no sewer line between Scholies and the Tamarack?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Or is it flow anyways? Does it go down Scholies and into Pittsfield?
So from the Tamarack, it goes towards Dalton, goes north to 125, which is basically where the, there's a culvert that goes across.
Yes.
Right there, and then it goes west.
Behind the orchards.
Through the woods, yeah. From the Tamarack, or just above the Tamarack, south, where there's no sewer, the grade is higher, it pitches towards Scholies. There is sewer on Scholies, so my observation would be, you know, obviously we'd have to talk to the city, but I think we, if we were going to extend the sewer from the Tamarack, or just above the Tamarack, down, we'd have to go down Scholies with it, or we'd have to pump, you know, go into a pump situation. So basically, I don't know exactly where 427 is that.
Pretty close to Scholies, right down to the bottom of the hill.
Bottom of the hill, north of, north of Scholies.
About 500 yards or so from Scholies.
North of Scholies. So, yeah, my, I mean, I would like to say there's probably a dozen homes that could, you know, be affected, but, you know, positively by a new line going down Scholies, if the city would, you know.
So you got to do, get permission from the city to hook a new main, Dalton main, into their system?
Yeah. But then there's, there's other addresses we have to look at connecting, going the other way, and then from April Lane to Scholies, that needs to be tied in also.
There's also where there...
There's, there's some in between Carratina, Carratina goes back and ties back into the city's main, but the Dalton side of Dalton Division is not tied into that. So there's, the way I see it, there'd be three separate connections, you know?
Like one?
Extending back towards, from the Tamarack, just above the Tamarack, there's probably four or five houses that would go north, and then from there, it goes south down to Scholies.
Those houses are Pittsfield or connected?
No, not the newer section, and obviously not.
Well, let's, let's go back to this Berkshire Gas thing. Does that help with, with cost or construction, putting in a sewer line, and Berkshire Gas is going to put in a new main?
No, it actually, it just makes more obstacles for us to put sewer in, but, you know...
So it's like you can't, you can't kill two birds with one stone in this respect as well?
Not in this respect. They come in and they'll probably directional bore, and they may not even dig it. If they do, they can run uphill, downhill, sideways, you know? We have to...
Go with gravity.
Yeah. But I'm more than happy to get the ball rolling with the city to see if there's anything more, you know? I don't know where the connection is on Scholies, if it's up to top.
Well, I think it would better would be that, but also, you know, you say that there would probably be three, for lack of a better term, spurs to hook up the rest of Dalton Division Road to the sewer.
That's if the gravity, you know, if the gravity works in our favor on all three spots. If not, there may have to be some pumping in one section.
So I guess it's not only, it's not only asking Pittsfield for permission, but it's also trying to find out the general cost, everything, there's engineering cost, and construction... and construction costs, I would imagine. Is that something you can get a ballpark for us on this, or?
Yeah.
Board members?
Yeah, yeah, but, John, from the Tamarack to Scalise Drive, how many feet is that?
Six tenths of a mile, so.
Six ten, six ten, 3,000 feet?
Yeah.
Pretty expensive, huh? Good guy. I realize the situation the Wendlings are in. Are you the Wendlings?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't know. Is your, are you on a septic field now?
Yes.
Has it, has it failed?
Excuse me?
Has it failed?
No.
Or is it still operational?
No. But I know that the three houses on my side of the road are all like 60 years or older.
Yep.
And so the leach fields probably.
Yeah, definitely.
Will need upgraded soon if they, if, you know, sewer doesn't go down that way.
Well, I'm gonna suggest, Mr. Chairman, you say, we're seeking funding right now for a full rebuild of Dalton Division Road. And any sewer work, which is a deep dig, as John will tell you, could be 12 or 14 feet deep, and that's heavy construction. Should be done in conjunction with the rebuild and reconstruction of Dalton Division Road in its entirety. But that's a ways down the road, too. But that could be included in the engineering aspect. Did we just appropriate $800,000 for engineering?
Yeah.
Yeah? It could be included in that. That would, they could look at all the various issues up there, the three separate angles, and come up with a, a plan incorporated in the reconstruction of Dalton Division Road. In the meantime, people have problems, and a lot of them appear to be antiquated. You know, it's a real issue.
Yes, it is.
You know, this is about it, but.
As a betterment, how does something like that work?
It's a betterment of the homeowners would be charged based on the frontage. So it'd be assessment over a period of years. And many times, communities take part of it. So just for the sake of talking, say it's $100,000. Sometimes a community takes part of it overall, it's a $50,000. And each homeowner has access to the sewer. They are charged a rate based on the frontage that they have a proportionate share of the cost, but that's over a period of years, almost like it won't be paid off over a period of years.
Is that what they did up on Washam on the road in Ebon? Didn't they put a sewer line up in through there?
I don't know.
They went down Ebon?
But I don't know.
Down Ebon to Pittsfield?
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's bound to drive. Bound to drive. There's no betterment, there wasn't a betterment.
I think we're looking to spend this much money on Dalton Division Road, this should be, should be put part of it. I agree with you, John. When I spend all this money, there should be part of it.
It's, it's the only way you can do it. It's a town, in fact, it'd be foolhardy to go out there and dig up the road and put a sewer in. You might have to go back and dig it back up because they're gonna, whatever, they may widen the road, or they may need depths or culverts or whatever in the overall plan.
That does sometimes happen in these letters, construction projects. Even though these federal aid projects are not designed to replace utilities, wherever utilities are impacted, they're replaced. So what we did on Uzotonic Street, we replaced the utilities where they're impacted, then there was a separate section where we actually replaced the utilities at the town's expense because it wasn't part of the construction project. And I can imagine it would work that way here. Where the utilities were impacted, they would be replaced. Where they didn't exist, they could be put in, could be a separate expense on the part of the town under the construction project.
There could be a water issue there. Is, is there water on Dalton Division Road?
Pittsfield has a water line.
Now, Pittsfield's ready to cross the street from you, right?
Yes.
It's all those houses. Is there a sewer there from that, from that?
No. Pipe's missing completely between Tamarack and Scalise. There's water, but there's no sewer.
And then brings up another issue. The people that are in Pittsfield, I mean, it's the same street. It might want to connect to the sewer. I'm sure they will, yeah. So Pittsfield, as I said in the past, should be cooperating and contributing to this project. It's not only the traffic problems at the end, it's also the sewer and possibly the water. A lot of complex issues here.
Well, maybe as for the cost end of it, we know it's gonna be big to do something like that. Am I right, John? I guess, I guess notifying Pittsfield of our, of an intention, whether it be sooner or later, is at least worth doing at this point. And in conjunction with our, the engineering that's gonna have to go, be done with that road, that should be looked at.
With the sewer, under new construction, runs the length of the street, down the middle of the road, or on one side or the other, it really doesn't make any difference. Houses from both sides can connect to it.
Right.
At the time, which is the most opportunistic. And I don't know, Pittsfield's aware of that. This is a possibility.
It gets, it gets complicated. When Silver Maple Farm was built, developer was required to put in a sewer. We, as a courtesy to Pittsfield, made sure there were stubs going to the Pittsfield side. Then Pittsfield just came in recently, in the past few years, they took the end of that sewer, so that, so that's town Dalton Main, but people from Pittsfield can access it. Then the city got permission from us to extend that main up past April Main towards Scalise. And that's pretty much where it ends.
Okay. So I guess where do we, where do we go from here?
I think the town manager should look into the feasibility of this being included in the total construction, reconstruction of Dalton Division Road.
Well, should the conversation with Pittsfield be started at this point in time?
If you wanna estimate the cost now, then it wouldn't hurt for John to talk to them. I think probably the practical solution is to look at the utilities when redesigning the road, and that's gonna involve Pittsfield. We're not gonna rebuild Dalton Division Road without involving the city of Pittsfield.
Right. And water could be a problem, but.
Water?
Yeah.
We should be looking at the water, just like we did on Uzotonic Street and South Street. We should be looking at the water and the sewer, having a comprehensive solution of those problems. But again, it wouldn't hurt for John to talk to Pittsfield now about it.
Okay. Why don't we start from there, John? And something else for you to do. Yeah, one more thing. Right. Dave, Rowan, do you have any comments?
No, just to say that I, I, unfortunately, I agree it would be more feasible to wait for the full road construction, but again, that might be, what, 10, 15, 18 years from now?
It will be years.
It will be years.
Let's be positive.
Yeah. It's been thought of in 10.
20.
We've done our part, which is appropriate the $800,000 dollars for engineering. So you never blame the town of Dalton these projects. We're four square with the engineering money and the development of the plans. Just getting the finances to implement them, that's always the problem. Fighting the battle for the federal money.
Well, you're welcome. I didn't think we would come to a solution tonight, but at least we have the discussion started, and, and we'll start looking into things. You know, who knows what Pittsfield may say, so, gee, maybe we should really do this. Maybe we'll help out with this one. That's a real big maybe.
I don't know what you had for dinner, but you should have shared.
We've mentioned this issue before, and you sent the city of Pittsfield a letter. They didn't even bother to respond.
They had not yet responded.
Yeah.
That was three months ago, right?
Two. Only two.
Only two months ago.
Okay. Well, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the other, or issue number two, why don't we, the policy, the sewer billing policy. And we're actually, two memos, we got a new one. We kinda, kinda went with the first one. Wouldn't you say, Ken? That we had in our box from the?
Yes.
From the board of assessors?
And your package was the first one from the board of assessors from April 26th. And then Laura supplemented that today with another memo.
Well, it's more like highlighting and just kinda, you know.
Reiterating?
Touchdown the main issue, the main issues of that memo, so it just referred to the other memo. Not so much a policy as, you know, just looking at the overall and possibly changing the amount of billing, you know? It's, it's gotten so that we know that the costs are going up.
Yeah, it seems complicated what you were discussing here with the two family, that isn't a actual two family, but acts as a two family that isn't.
I think what I'm trying to say is the, to try to make the distribution fair. Because if you're looking at an in-law unit that possibly isn't even being used at the time, they're considered two units. They're getting billed two unit charges. And then you have a single family home that's husks, that really is two homes, or has six bedrooms or seven bedrooms, and they would get a one unit charge. Aside from me to reading, I mean, there's gotta be another fair, a fairer way to bill sewer. And one of the suggestions would possibly be by using the number of bathrooms.
I know what you're saying. But let's, let's take a family like mine, a family of five, who's now down to two.
That's what I'm saying.
We're not using the water that we used to when the kids were home.
That's what I'm saying.
And so would it be better to bill by the number of people who live at the address rather than the number of bathrooms that are there?
It would be cumbersome. You'd have to, you know, right now, the assessor's office does, acts as a sewer commissioners' clerk in getting the billing ready. If you're looking at the number of people there, how, how much does that change? Every year, you'd have to use the census or use, I mean, it would be rather cumbersome to change the billing every single cycle, which is every six months. You know, I don't think it's feasible. I mean, you'd have to get a clerk just for that, for your, you know, for the sewer commissioner, not just for that. I mean, it's the right times of the year to do that.
The metering that you're talking about is a water meter?
Well, the metering, yes. We, we base our sewer usage on the water readings for the meter readings. But those are businesses. Residential, I mean, and that's something that can be done down the road in coordination with the water department installing meters and stuff, but that's a lengthy process. That's something for the future. That's a fair.
I know that the water department years ago have been looking into meters for all the houses. They're not mandated yet by the state. And John, you may be able to shed some light on this. Will they be?
I'm not positive on the water. I do know that the water department bills single family, multifamily, or they do have an in-law apartment classification. Because I, I, yeah, I have that situation in my own house where I have an in-law apartment I'm not using, but I get billed, my sewer is double.
Right.
But the water department dropped my rate down to an in-law apartment rather than a full.
Oh, it's a different rate than a full unit?
Can that be incorporated with your billing?
We only, I, I don't know. I'd have to talk to the software company. We have either the flat rate, which is per unit rate, and then we have, we enter meter readings, so we have the, and then the meter. So to, to have like a third scenario, I don't know. I don't, I suppose you could say like one and a half units and have it instead of two units.
Yeah.
To have it calculate, you know, and still have the rate, you know, the one.
Is that what they do?
They do, yeah.
It's just like a one and a half rate.
Yeah.
Is that what it ended up being?
I believe it's about that.
It seems fair, though.
But it still doesn't help.
It doesn't help when you.
Like right now, I only have two people in my house. It still doesn't help that situation.
Or yours, or.
Yeah.
Or any of us.
Or me, I have one.
Yeah.
You know, so it's like, you know, it's, it's, I think, I think at least bathrooms would be a fairer way because if you have, but I don't know about, I don't, I don't think it, it could be done. It certainly, we wouldn't, the assessor's office would not have the manpower or the time to monitor persons, people, individuals in the house. Or it'd change the billing each time, you know what I'm saying?
Mr. Chairman, what I gotta say about bathrooms is some of the modern houses, you know, they have three or four bathrooms, even though there's two people in the house.
I know. I know. I, I, you know, so it's just, I, what I'm trying to do is say to you, this needs to be looked at and studied, and I think it should be done in coordination with the water department because we base a lot of what we do and what they, yeah, and then what they do. You know, they, they bill for water, anything over two bathrooms is an additional.
Forty.
Forty, five dollars or something, which to me seems fairer than a unit that has, you know, five bathrooms. Why do you have five bathrooms? You probably have at least three or four people, you know what I mean? Typically, you would downsize if you, you know.
That's a really lovely point. There's an excuse for everything, Laura, that's all I'm getting at, there's an excuse for everything.
But I'm saying, and we saw what happens when you take something that was built, just with the Dalton Housing Authority, something that was built unit and then go to meter thousands, we lost thousands of dollars in each billing. So it's, it makes a difference.
Well, the, the thing you put in here about the building inspector and the, the way the cards are, are list, list whatever they, they do.
When it's a, when it's an in-law apartment, it's typically listed as a two family. And one, on the, and that's, I mean, this is well before my time. And therefore, they would get two unit charges when you do the sewer. But it's not a legal two family, it's a, it's a single family with an in-law unit. So we're trying, that's something, you know, we're trying to devise, but it was to point out that for the way the sewer is built now, we're even, not we, but previous assessors and the office had even used the car, you know, designated the cars as a two family when it was an in-law.
Well, is this something that your office in the building inspector can get together and do?
Yeah, we'll work that out. But I, it was to give you an example of how the sewer was being billed. So you could have a home with an in-law apartment that's not being used, and then you have a sprawling six or seven bedroom home.
Do they ever, they apply for an abatement or something? You know what I'm saying? If they came in and said, all right, I got this, according to the census, I only got two people here, or one person living here, could that be set up?
That, I mean, I think you'd have so many, and then you couldn't, you couldn't judge what the income was gonna be from the sewer if you're relying on giving everybody an abatement that comes in and says, I have one person in the house. I don't think that's feasible. You wouldn't have anything to base your.
Yeah, abatements don't come into play when you're figuring out the rate.
No.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm just saying, you know, something to start working on.
But just to address this issue you brought up in your letter about mother-in-law apartments.
Yeah.
Okay. There's a criteria for determining if there's a mother-in-law apartment, father-in-law apartment, whatever you wanna call it. That's if it has a separate bathroom, separate kitchen, and separate entrance. Right? So some of these could conceivably be just a, a separate room, which wouldn't constitute a two-family house.
No, we wouldn't. We go in and look at them. So in order to do a two-family, that's to be two units.
That's, you imply that some of them may be illegal. I think. I think this is really an issue...
No, no, I'm sorry. It's not illegal, it's not what they're permitted for by the building inspector, he's the one that brought up the issue.
Yeah.
They're not illegal in his opinion, they're not a, they're not a two-family because they don't have the second egress and rest and that sort of...
I get that, that's what I was gonna say something. This is primarily a building department enforcement officer's decision, whether it's a two-family house in a separate apartment, or actually, it's just one house with a room designated.
Correct. And the assessors, um, can value and put in the card what they see and what is there. It doesn't necessarily have to be permitted as so, this is what we're valuing, it has two units, this is how we're valuing it. And we have that right to do that. I mean, it's, it was, it's been done for years. But the thing is that, and the building inspector is right, you have people coming in getting the cards, and then they're marketing their home as a two-family when in essence, it really isn't, so...
You're talking about meters, in fact, it wasn't too long ago, the board tasked me to go to the water commissioners and inquire about meters because of this issue. And I went and brought up the question, and they had every reason in the world, but it wasn't a feasibility idea, wasn't a feasible idea.
To put meters in all the houses?
Yep. The cost, and this, and that, and this, and that, and this, and that. And, uh, so, that may have changed the last couple of years, but I doubt it. But that is the answer, that every home would have a meter, and you would just pay for what you used in your house. I mean, that's, that's Pittsville, right, Mark? Don't they have meters in all houses?
In where?
Pittsville.
I wanna say Hinsfield does.
No, Hinsfield doesn't, that'll be...
Or is it Worthington?
Pittsville doesn't have all meters. You have the option, right?
You can voluntarily get a meter in your home, you pay to put it in.
Yeah.
So, you know, get, don't get the flat rate, you could, and many people do that as their household size, they put the meter in themselves, and then the city bills that the meter rate.
Ken, you have to buy the meter yourself?
You have to install it yourself.
And buy it?
Buy it.
So do they provide you with the meter, or you hire a plumber to install it?
You know, I don't know the detail on it, John, and I assume you have to buy the meter for it, but they may provide the meter to you.
Yeah. I mean, the metering system's now, they're electronic too, and it's not anything where you would have to go into the home. You can drive by, like the electric company and the gas company does. Or actually, I think the electric company goes right to their office, but at any rate. Any other comments or ideas for where we go from here? Because there's no, there's no, uh...
We have really wide, there's a word.
Answer.
Yeah, there's no, there's no clear and simple answer right now, we're just suggesting that the whole system of billing needs to be looked at, even the distribution of charges between the flat rate, the homeowners basically, and the meter rates, which are the business. We need to look at the whole and come up with a comprehensive policy. So I suggest we put this on our item, future agenda items, and at some point, perhaps in the next year, we'll bring this back to you.
You got it.
Sure, I can just say, yes, one thing, and how I say this, I know I'm dinging myself. When Tom got a federal grant, there was no separate sewer ring in the early eighties, Tom got a federal grant to connect the sewer on Upper North Street, was a multimillion-dollar project from, uh, I don't know, what's the name of that little street? Davis Street?
Yes, Davis Street.
Uh, east, all through Grayburn Drive and all along the bridge, and all that stuff. And as part of taking the money, the sewer money, we had to create a separate sewer fee that was mandatory, if you took the money. So we did, and as part of it was, you had to establish a flat rate for all apartments, the buildings that weren't metered.
Okay.
That's pretty much where we are today, except for the, uh, the board recently granted a, uh, what do you call it, exemption to that policy to the Dalton Housing Authority.
Well, they're billed on a metered rate.
Right, but typically, only commercial is metered.
Right, but they're billed on a meter rate for the water department, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, I don't know if they are for the water department.
We get our, we get our meter readings from them.
We get our meter readings from the water department, but I, I can't say that the water department...
There was a change... Yes, I know what you're saying, but there was a change, there was a change in that, and I can't remember exactly what it was.
I don't know that they did.
I have to ask, I have to ask the people in the housing authority, but I wanna say that the, the water department didn't change or make a policy change with them. I'll, I'd have to check into that. In fact, if I think of it, I will this week.
Yeah, you let me know on that, 'cause I remember what we left it was, we were hoping that they would change it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'll, I'll check into that, see what comes. Okay, um, thank you, Laura.
Yeah.
Before we go on to the last section of our, of our sewer discussion here, are we all set with this last one? Okay. So we're gonna, we're gonna set the sewer user fee for the upcoming, for our fiscal year, fiscal year 19. And, um, Ken, I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw this, throw this at you, um, the proposal, while you and, I guess, Sandy.
Sandy is here tonight. She prepared the analysis, she actually had, probably had two spreadsheets, gave you a more extensive analysis without accounting for the indirect costs. And Sandy and I looked at this late last week, I asked her to prepare the second spreadsheet, which was only ready today, so you should have a second one, which just has two rates on it, what we're actually charging this year, and what we're proposing for next year's increase. So if you looked at the, the more extensive spreadsheet, which had four columns, you'll see that for every proposed rate change in the coming fiscal year, we're gonna lose money unless we go up to 20% increase in the coming fiscal year. And on that basis, I asked her to produce the second spreadsheet. So what you'll see there is actually, this year, not accounting for the indirect cost, and that's the, kind of the internal administrative cost of, um, the general administrative part of, of the expenses, and revenue and expenditure basis, in this fiscal year, we're gonna run a deficit of $26,000. And we're gonna have to find out from the Department of Revenue how to handle that deficit, a slight deficit, and we think it's because the revenues didn't come in as they had last year. Sandy, you have a comment on that?
I'm sorry, I missed that.
Oh, you lost it. I said, uh, we are currently running a deficit of about $26,000.
Right.
We're gonna have to consult the Department of Revenue on how they would like us to handle that revenue deficit this year.
Right.
And we think it's attributable to a decrease in the revenues coming in. We know we had, had a significant increase in the expenses as well.
Ken, you mean, this fiscal year, the one we're in now?
Just ended.
The one that you're taking?
We ended with a slight deficit.
Yeah, that's what I mean. Last fiscal year?
In 18.
In 18, we ended with a slight deficit, and we're gonna have to find out with the DOR, how they want us to handle that deficit. It doesn't, go ahead.
Most often, it's called a revenue deficit, and you have to cure them before the tax rate, or it goes on the tax rate.
Yeah, can you just say the rate's not the tax rate?
So might, it can't be paid through stabilization?
That's curing.
Oh, okay, all right, sorry.
That's okay.
Would you get to raise the rate, and that's what's implied here, enough? The projected rate for fiscal 19?
The deficit could be raised on the tax rate automatically included in the tax rate for the coming fiscal year, could be.
It won't be able to be raised through FY19 sewer fees.
Okay, that was my question.
Right. So, I mean, 'cause 18's done, we had a rate, the rate didn't, the revenue didn't come to meet the expenditures, mainly, a lot of that has to do with, we normally do not expend all of our expenditures, but because we had that sewer emergency, there was payroll that we had for that, we had a lot of sewer emergencies that caused a lot of expenses, 200 feet on, uh...
Daily Avenue.
Daily Avenue, uh, there was something on Grant Hall Road, so there isn't, beforehand, we've had revenue not meet, oh, excuse me, we've had revenue not meet our estimate of revenue, but we always had expenses that allowed it to be cured because expenses were not spent that were budgeted. So now we don't have that, and that's why we have to take care of this deficit.
So what are you and Ken recommending?
We need to increase the rate by 20% in the coming fiscal year.
And how do you pay for the deficit?
Uh, I don't think, this is, we're, there's no, no discussion on that yet, meaning we have to cure it before the tax rate, or it goes on the tax rate.
Yeah, right. It'd be an adjustment to the tax rate in the coming fiscal year.
Okay, the deficit goes on the tax rate?
It may go on the tax rate, depends on what DOR recommends, what we finally decide is the best course here.
Yeah, there's only two ways to do it. You pay it through stabilization, or you put it on the upcoming tax rate.
Now, with the tax rate, the people even who don't have the sewer would also be contributing to that, right?
That's correct. And that's similarly with the indirect cost, that's what's happening now. We don't charge for the indirect cost, but I've had that, um, analysis done for several years now because you ought to know what the real cost is of administering sewer program.
Okay, so our, so our decision is to, our decision, what we need to decide or not is to increase the rate, um, by 20% for both the metered rate and for the annual flat rate.
That's right.
In order for us to...
Really, break even, simple expenses, and that kind of the indirect costs.
Right.
Now, our expenditures in 19 are higher because of the way that Pittsville has been upping their bill to us. In, in 17, we had to add $70,000 or so from stabilization because our budget was not enough to meet the billing they sent to us. Same thing occurred, so we now then budgeted $900,000 for FY18, and it came in at $990,000. So I'm fearful the million is not enough for the intergovernmental sewer treatment, but it's, doesn't seem to matter whatever we do, they're always coming in...
Higher.
Higher.
So what's, what's the issue with stormwater management going up 20 grand?
Stormwater management has been, that's the budget that's occurred for the last three, four years.
Or actuals for about $5,000?
Forty-nine hundred, right.
What we, I'm serious.
No, you go ahead, 'cause you know the reason for that.
What we've been anticipating is, uh, work we have to do on stormwater management. So we've been budgeting for that under the new permit, the federal government is gonna issue us, EPA, there's some additional work we're going to have to do, and that's why we're budgeting that amount, not spending it, because they've been putting off when the implementation date is. So I believe the implementation date is this July 1st, and we may have to do some extra work in managing the stormwater.
So that kind of budget's really been in place for, for four years. First, the first time it went in place had to do with the, what was that company that was gonna put something through? What was that called? Kinder Morgan, right?
Brilliant, brilliant name, huh?
So that's when that budget went up and increased to, you know, what, $20,000? So, and then another initiative came along, the one that Ken was just talking, and it's just taking more time to happen, so the expenses don't get spent, um, as much.
The, uh, the other question is the, uh, Hinsfield Sewer Commitment?
Yeah.
And that's gone down, or going down, or thought to go down, or...
It went down from what we budgeted.
What, we actually measure their flows.
Right.
Yeah. So we bill them based on their flows, we have a spreadsheet.
And that's based on what Pittsville bills us?
It's a, you know, it's a calculation, you know, we take whatever we use off Pittsville, and then theirs is, it's based on their flows, we measure their flows.
And last year, their billing was $105,000, and so we budgeted $126 based on the fact that it would stay that level going, but it, their flows, the measurement of their flows were actually less.
Were way down.
So their billing was then less, yes.
Even though the bill, the major bill from, to Pittsville of all the waste was so much higher.
Right. Yeah, it was low. I mean, so we kinda lost...
Their flow would go down that much?
How?
Their flow would go down that much?
It went down that much? And I don't know what they did. You know, maybe they stopped their...
Not taking showers.
Watering for something, I don't know.
Or maybe their stormwater was going in there before, I don't know.
Right.
You know, you don't know what was...
Or their sewer lines are leaking before they get here.
Maybe.
They start to leak. Okay.
So, you know, that, you know, that was a way over budget, so that, that hurt.
Part of the problem with bill coming from Pittsville is that they have capital improvements they're doing at the wastewater treatment plant, and they're using cash to pay for it. So we use cash to pay for it, then we get a proportionate share of that cash outlay. So instead of bonding for, we guess, the principal and interest payment over a period of years, we're just getting a slug of expenditure for capital improvements, and it just becomes like a rat for a bow, considering.
And we can't, and we can't con that money, we have to...
We could. Now, one of the strategies we could use is, if it's for a capital expense, we may wanna borrow it and spread that out over a number of years because that's a reasonable way to kind of deal with a large capital expenditure which they outweigh in cash. Think about that.
We know our portion of that.
Yeah, it's just about 10%.
And their total bill for what they have to prove is about $74 million.
Mm-hmm, right.
So 10% of $74 million is very, 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 is a lot.
It's a bill.
Hopefully, that, they're gonna budget, they're gonna borrow for that and not, they don't have that cash.
They don't have that, yeah, they don't have that cash, but they've been doing other, they're gonna have to bond for that, but they're doing other capital improvements by using cash.
Well, given something where it got voted down or denied through city council, then...
Yeah, but they're, they're being forced to undo that. The EPA is, is on it, they have no choice, they have to spend the money.
Okay. Well, I guess we can go on and on about this, but we have to decide on what...
Okay, I have a second, I have one more question. If they bond for the $74 million, how does that affect us with our, our portion, our 10%, as far as paying them?
Yeah, I haven't figured out what that debt service would look like, but, you know, you figure, we're gonna pay about 10% of that, that's debt service, then Hinsfield will pay about 10% of our debt service, that's how it comes, flows upstream.
And it would be, it would be calculated into the fees?
It'll hit the intergovernmental sewer line.
But it's not gonna count, it's not gonna hit the tax rate, it'll hit the fees?
Hit the fees.
All right.
And Mark, if you look where expenditures are in the middle of the page...
Uh, which one, Sandy, the double one or the four?
Pardon me?
On the double one?
Yeah, or either, any, either one of them. So underneath where it says Department 449, you see the capital line items?
Yep.
That's probably where that portion of the debt would appear from Pittsville...
Okay.
Um, as our expense.
Okay.
Um, so we also have debt, too, that we're occurring with sewer projects that we're completing, and if you notice, that it's, you know, $82,000 because it's over five years, um, we've got sewer coming up in this year to pay what's happening at, what's that called, the sewer interceptor project? So we have debt as well, and so the portion that comes to us is gonna be one in 20 years, maybe one year of 20. I don't know how many, how many years they would go out with their debt with the $74 million, does anybody know? One in 40 years, maybe, so... But right now, the project that Ken was talking about, they put a roof on one of their buildings for the sewer, it was like a million bucks. So that cost came directly to us instead of being borrowed.
Right.
$100,000, yep.
A million.
10%.
Yeah, whatever our percentage is right now.
It just came...
Right to us.
Big to our bill.
That's what I'm worried, like, if they bond out $74 million, how, how it's gonna hit us? It's like, are we gonna have time to take our own borrowing to get that, or is it, are they gonna say, "Well, you're responsible to pay this much," or...
Well, that's been a continuing problem with the city, because we got, actually, billed a year in arrears, but it's been difficult for us to find out just what the expense structure has been. I didn't get it until almost around, just before the special kind of meeting, and I've been af, it was after the beginning of January. So we have to get the city to cooperate a little bit better with us so that we know what's happening there and we can plan appropriately, and not try to do it... So, we have to get the city to cooperate a little bit better with us, so that we know what's happening there, and we can plan appropriately, and not try to do this at the last minute.
And the other thing that I was thinking about, that $74 million, is they're not going, are they going to expend $74 million in one year? Probably not. However many years it takes is how many more years of borrowing they're going to, you know, the borrowing for the one year might not be, what, maybe $3 million, let's say? It depends on what they're spending.
Oh, right.
You know what I mean? They're not going to borrow the whole thing all at once. They shouldn't. It has to be sitting on money for however many years it takes to
They might.
Yeah, they could.
Can't rule it out.
I, yeah, but I think there's rules against it, actually.
They might decide to tackle the whole ball of wax at once, the repairs and updates they need for the sewer treatment plant.
If they can.
Yeah. We don't really know. We won't know until it happens.
So, if you just flip to the four column analysis for a minute, and say, we only wanted to look at the third column, or the second column from the right, it's a 15% increase, and you can see if we went and just increased by 15%, we'd be, we have a $25,000 projected deficit. And that's why we're suggesting we go at least a 20%. And that $25,000 deficit does not take into account the indirect expenses. That's just on revenue and expense, direct revenue and expense basis.
Well, to make up for that deficit, the only way to make up for that 26 grand, am I looking at that right, at the 15%? It would be $26,000?
Yeah, just roughly 26, 25, 8.
You could only, you could only make that up through the stabilization fund?
Yeah, you can't make it up with FY '19, right?
Right. So, FY '19, yes, you'd have to treat, you'd have to appropriate money out of the, if you want to go to 15%, then we're looking at appropriation out of the stabilization account, treating it as revenue.
How do we fund our stabilization?
Through our By net income from the sewer user. That's how we funded it.
And there's no net income this year?
Right.
$6,000.
And in our stabilization fund, we have roughly?
We transferred, I think we had, I think we had, what? $200,000. More, there's more than that. What did we take, we took 70 out, I think, probably about $250,000 to $300,000.
They would definitely need a cushion, because Ken, we don't know where your negotiations or court action with the company that did the bridge work down here is going.
Right.
Oh, yeah. I think we're going to have to go for, bite the bullet, go for 20%.
Remember, we have a, I'll talk about that a little later.
Yeah.
Sewer system evaluation study is hanging out there. That has to be done.
Okay.
As well as we have to complete, that's funded, though. We have to complete the infiltration and full analysis.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, I make a motion, we increase the sewer usage by 20%.
I'll second that. Motion's remain second. Sir, further discussion or questions? Seeing none at all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Abstentions? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both for coming and standing.
Okay, we have some grants to accept. Both of them are for the communications center. And the first is an award of $127,939 from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts State 9/11 Department. And this is a, this is a yearly grant that we, we do get, that we fund our budget for the communications center. So...
I make a motion, we accept a grant from the Massachusetts State 9/11 Department in the amount of $127,939.
I'll second that. Motion's remain second. Any questions? Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Abstentions?
No abstentions.
The second one, as I said, is also for the dispatch, and this for training. And it's in the amount of $25,000 from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts 9/11 Department Training Grant and EMD Regulatory Compliance Grant Program. I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, I make a motion, we accept the $25,000 from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts State 9/11 Department Training Grant and EMD Regulatory Compliance Grant Program.
I will second that. Motion's remain second. Sir, further discussion? All in favor?
Uh...
Aye, opposed? Abstentions? Now, we have the Old Dalton High report. And I understand that Ken, Bob, Mark, and Bill Engineering had a sit-down with us. Now, let Ken report on it.
Well, we met, and please, a lot of Mark joined in here. I, we met last week with Bill Engineering, and we went over the plan that I showed you the last time. It was a seven-lot layout. We looked at a little bit different lot layout, and I've got it up here. You should have a copy in your packet. Went to a six-lot layout, making all the lots, similar in size, about a quarter of an acre. It creates a bigger green space in here, and it allows us to improve the drainage through here, so we have this nice park-like area. And as last time, we've added this overflow parking. We've made, we've made that a regular part of the parking in this. All the total amount of parking conforms with what our zoning bylaw would require. Right now, the senior center is operating in a special permit, allowing it to have less parking than is required under our zoning bylaw.
So, am I correct in saying that that's 30 spaces? Is that what the 12 and 18 refer to? And either, either
I'm not sure. I haven't, I didn't, I didn't count these.
I guess I could count the spaces, but
Yeah, I think you're right, John, 12.
Okay, so it's an additional 30 spaces?
Yeah, yeah. So, that is the only thing that's changed. We've also shown, this is the sewer line right now, this is a sewer line coming out of the senior center that goes like this. So, it's going to come down here, and it's going to be all part of the town property with a spur that serves the sewers to the lots. And then we have an easement that runs in the back of lots three and four, and across lot four. And part of the plan is not to puncture the existing 42-inch drain, but to hit drains that already exist, that already intersect with the existing drain, because when you do that, it creates a lot of permitting problems to try to intercept that drain where it exists the 42-inch drain. So, we wouldn't be entering that drain at all, except where it's already entered. And this current plant, although it's a little bit of a low spot, water, any kind of excess water is going to kind of come in through here, just in this spot, and drain off. Now, we've got a hypothetical scheduling here, tentative schedule, and we're trying hard to stick to that. You can see that we want to have the bids due by the end of August. The plan generally is to have this project underway by the end of September with a three-month deconstruction date, so that by the end of this calendar year, the building will be down. These lots are not carved in stone. This is general plan, but remember, still on the table here for your approval is mending the contract with our engineers, so that we can do the extra work and try to get as alternates, there's two alternates proposed. One, to build a parking lot, and we're going to include whatever kind of landscaping or lawn restoration needed here, and two is to build utilities. So, those will be alternates one and two, and they are accepted in the order of preference. Right now, we've got, the parking lot is alternate one. We have the funding to do that, and then the utilities is alternate two. We'll do that if we have the funding. The base bid is just demolishing the building, getting rid of the materials, and kind of filling in the site. That's the base bid.
So, if we approve both of those options?
Yeah.
The first one, though, we don't, is the parking. If we have money, then we'll
We'll do the utilities.
We'll do the utilities.
Yeah.
Ken, what you're saying is, if there's money left over from the bond issue, we can do these without any kind of authorization, right?
Right.
Even though they're not directly germinated to demolition of the building?
It'll be part of the, part of the construction project.
So, the, what do we appropriate?
$1.282 million, and then we have, remember, from that, the insurance fund, $100,000 or so.
And should we, should we wait that on a decision on what to do?
Do we get a budget?
Or do we Or do we approve both of those options?
Yeah, my recommendation is to do that, because it doesn't, well, it's going to cost us something. We have to do a little bit more engineering. It'll cost us something to do that, but we'll be ahead of the game.
I thought the engineering was somewhere around $9,000.
Yes, that's exactly right for it.
Well, I, I think we, we should. I mean, one, the senior center needs parking. And two, if we're going to have building lots, we need utilities to sell the lots. You don't have utilities, you can't sell a lot.
I think the, the, well, it's interesting. I think the whole video is people are already calling for interested in the lot.
Yeah, they're already interested.
Right, really?
Yeah, we're really good.
Wow, good, good. Well, then we have to figure out what the price is, and will they still be interested in it?
We got to hear from them. $100,000 is a lot.
Sounds swamp land in Dalton, you know?
Not quite. Only once every five years.
Brilliant, John. It was really, it's a quick question, Ken. You're, Part II, Section B, sale of property to developer. What does that mean?
Where's that, John?
Section
Romanu 2.
Romanu 2, Section B. Or what, yeah? Under timing? No, sale of property to developer. Yes, but it's under Section 2, is Oh, yeah, under timing, yes, yeah.
Oh, okay. You're, you are jumping ahead of the game a little bit. What you're looking at is, I wanted to give you a sense of what we're doing in parallel with this, and that's getting ready to issue the bond to do this. And what you have here is a summary from our financial advisor, a meeting that we had, Tom Trecher, Tom Account, and I, talking about getting him familiar with what we were doing here. So, this doesn't, so he wanted to get a sense of when we were going to be ready to dispose of the disposition plan of the property, not that we're going to dispose of it to any single developer. But what we need to do here is if you look at the next page of that, you'll see the information that we have to get to bond council. Gives you a sense of what we have to do, and our financial advisor from Unibank is working on a plan for us to issue a bond. So, are we going to, it's the same kind of strategy we were just talking about with Pittsfield. We want to issue the bond all at once, use all the proceeds now, or do we want to issue the so-called bond anticipation notes as we draw down funds for the project? The critical thing is, we have to have money to pay the contractors, once we have them on board. We don't want to cause any cash flow crisis for the town. So that about the same time that we start to demolish the building, we're also going to be selling some kind of debt in order to finance the demolition of the project.
So, that's just info thrown in there for the benefit of the binding authority?
Yeah, we have to, we have to do a so-called a green light letter. So, we have to get all this information. If you look at this letter from Lock and Lord, this is the kind of information, and went to our financial advisor, David Eisenfeld, and we had a meeting about this letter, and we went through the parts of it. And you have a sense of the kind of detailed information we have to issue, so that bond council has to issue an opinion to the bondholders, and that's the kind of information that we have to get together in order to issue a bond.
Because we really haven't discussed, because we should wait till it's demolished, of course, how we're going to market, and who's going to market?
Right, so
You and I talked informally, and for some reason, some constraints, we just can't list them with a realtor.
State law doesn't allow us to just list it with a realtor, except under special conditions. You can't sell like you're normal. Think, you know, get a, get a realtor and just sell the lots.
We got to think about how we're going to market these, and who's going to do it. It's going to be a time-consuming, complicated procedure.
So, towards the end of this process, or that we'll, I'll come back to you with a disposition plan, so-called disposition plan, and you can decide among the alternatives the way you want to proceed to sell the lots.
Ken, do we need a vote on whether, yeah, we need a vote on those options?
Yeah, if we go ahead with the alternatives, and the engineers can
Yeah, well, unless there's further discussion remaining, board member.
I make a motion, we accept both options, one and two, for the demolition of Old Dalton High.
I'll second that. Motion's remain second, sir. Further discussion? Seeing none at all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Abstentions? Okay. There is nothing to report. This, the school building committee or the school committee, there will be meetings this Thursday, and I'll have to report next meet, next, our next meeting, which would be the 13th of August. The next one is North Mountain Park. It's a report on the prior pollution, and I'll just start off, because Mark, John, Ken, you know, jump in if I leave anything out, or you have, have any comments about what I say about our inspection up there, or if I get something wrong. But on July 13th, we, and that being me, Ken, Mark, John, Glenn Lagerwall, and Jeff Moody, who was the originator of the email that was sent to us with the information with regard to the property, as well as the DEP representative, Tony Karpaska, did a site visit of the North Mountain Park area. And in general, we were there maybe an hour and a half, I guess, hour, hour and a half. And in general, what we did is we went through the property. Mr. Moody helped point out the areas of where he remembers these oil tanks being cut up and foundations, and we also viewed the one standing building that was there. And that, that last building that's there does have an underground oil tank that we did find, or at least we found the vent tube for it, so we assume that there's an underground oil tank there. And there were a couple of 55-gallon drums within the building as well. I don't know what the contents were. I could not see them. Did, are there a few guys go in there? What was the building, what floor? It was part of Harrison's lumber.
Oh, okay.
It's, there were, looking at the Google, Google Earth photos, the last set of photos, there were three buildings in a row there, and two of them were demolished, and this is the last standing. This is a really old building? Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's really old. So, any rate, we went through, and Mr. Karpaska stated that DEP will be sending us a written report probably within the next couple of weeks, because he and, can't think of David's last name, Slawik, Slawik, are out of vacation, so they'll send us a report at some point in time. See, in I'm sorry, who? Slawik? So, what is he, he's with? He's with the DEP as well. Okay, thank you. I guess, I don't know if he's Tony's supervisor?
I think he is.
Okay. And he's the one who received the original letter and email?
Thank you.
Tony was saying, at a minimum, by the looks of it, and this is unofficial, right, but at a minimum, we're going to have to remove that underground oil tank. We're going to have to remove those 55-gallon drums. And I believe that the letter will probably reflect that. As for the possibility of other contaminants on the, on the property, we could do testing. However, if we do nothing with the property and don't disturb anything, we don't have to do anything. Am I right in saying that, guys? But we couldn't use the property. Exactly. But we can't use the property. What I'm saying is, they're not going to mandate, they're not going to mandate that possible cleanup. I see. If we don't disturb the property as it is, because it's been that way
Right.
For a very long time. But again, as I said, the, the oil tank by that building and the 55-gallon drums, because we know they're there Regardless, they're going to have to be fixed up.
Regardless, that may have to be fixed up.
They're going to have to be reported.
Regardless, that has to be dealt with.
The tank, that existing tank.
And the drums.
And the drums, yeah. But then again, we have to have official word on this within the next.
Yes, yeah, right.
Existence of a official statement by the token.
Okay, right, thank you.
And I guess as bottom line, that's about the, that's about it as for the discussion that we had and we saw out there. You had anything else, John, Mark?
There's still ongoing, I mean, just broken into things and, yeah.
One of the things I've done is I've asked our town planner to put the information together for the Berkshire Regional Plan Commission Brownfields program.
Yeah.
Same program we cleaned up 339 Water Street and looked at the Warren property for. So, if we get it on a list and they want to move forward, you know, it's usually a two-phase process to a phase one site study, which is a historical review of the property and how it was used. And then that gives you, then they'll recommend whether they should go forward to the actual testing. So, we'll see about getting on it and it'll be paid for through the Brownfields program.
That's good. The, the meeting with, the meeting was positive and.
It was.
And.
Congenial.
Yeah, congenial, I mean, he didn't seem terribly upset with what was going on and by no means is it the worst place he's ever seen. It's just one of those things that happens throughout the years and we'll work at it. But that's where we stand right now. It's a work in progress, as Mark was saying, and we'll keep at it. And when we have more information, I would think when we get the letter from DEP, we'll present it at the meeting. Unless other board members have questions?
So, we took the property, whatever, 10 years ago, we didn't realize there was this building there and all that?
Well, we knew the building was there. It took a while for us to even find what was that oil tank.
No, no, what I'm talking about, when we took something for not paying taxes.
Yeah.
I mean, I think in the future, next time we take something before we, for not paying taxes, we want to check a little bit or something, what it is we're taking. That was just a suggestion going forward, you know, just don't assume, you know, that everything's, that it might be of some value to us when we take something, but not paying taxes.
We could, we could, from what I gather, as long as we know what's going on there, the property can still be sold. I mean, it's how many hundreds of acres? Hundred twenty-five?
Oh, wow, is that big?
It's a hundred and twenty-five because the rest is all APR.
Yeah, oh, okay, well, yeah, the APR.
But that's not just across.
Yeah, but you can sell it in segments, you can sell the segments that really were.
I don't know.
The APRs have to be, I believe.
Oh, together, all the APR.
The APR goes for the sale.
Yeah, that particular piece probably could have been sold separately, just like we sold the Dalton tractor building and surrounding property separately.
So, the lot.
The parcel's valuable.
So, the lot to the north of Route Nine, where this North Mountain Park initiative is, that could be sold as one.
Yeah, could have, could have been sold as one.
But it can't be sold, we can't divide it and sell it.
Subdivide it and sell it?
Or could we?
I think it's, I think the thing, the statue or whatever said the best practice was to keep it together and sell it, sell it as one and not to subdivide it.
But typically in a tax title auction, you just sell all the land as is. We sold Dalton tractor, as is, so you would have sold that lot. We could have severed the lot from the APR. But at the time we were doing the auction, we had no, there was, we had no indication that anything is going on. Couple of farms, we thought they were farms, but I didn't inspect it personally, and we thought it was an integral part of the farm, so we're going to sell the whole thing as farm. It only made sense, it only made sense to separate the old Dalton tractor building, that's why we separated out. The rest we wanted to keep together, it was APR land that's kind of surrounding it, so it made sense to sell it as one.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Yeah, I did say something. I agree with you completely, but I think in this instance, and it wasn't 10 years ago, I said that was in 2009, actually it was in 2014, I was wrong about that.
Was that recent?
Yeah. This group up there, there were several parcels and they were in default on, well, all the ones they were in default on, four or five parcels. And these things are primarily administrative in the collector's office and we just go through routinely and that's how we, it's difficult to ascertain the quality of every parcel of land we take by taxes. But I will point this out, there is one Ken and I have been working on for years over there by the old Warren landfill. It's 30 acre parcel and the owners owe $135,000 in taxes. And we've been advised and we advise ourselves that don't touch it with a 10-foot pole.
And I actually had a conversation, I, I know about landfills and I worked for a company that got stuck with one. Don't, 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 don't own a landfill.
Admittedly, this one up here with Barton is the last thing anybody expected.
I think, I think the DEP guy goes, what are we here for?
Yeah.
Because it looks like it's farm. It was farmed after that, right, okay.
Right. If you look, if you go back and look at the, the pictures from Google Earth, all you see during the summertime here are the hay rolls in that whole area. And that includes the area that we were looking at that may be contaminated.
Wow.
So, it's.
No, I mean, it looks like something I would be interested in at one time and buy.
Yeah, yeah. Wow, it's beautiful up there, it really is gorgeous.
I won't buy that piece.
Ken, have you ever gotten any type of action or agreement with the state of Massachusetts regarding the extension of that parcel into Windsor? Has it ever been resolved? That's the reason we didn't sell it in the first place.
That's right. There's really never been any resolution, although I think after our state representative talked to the DAR people, I don't think they'll stand in our way.
But it might take legislation?
No, I don't think so. I think we could just, they have a right, see, the state has a right of first refusal. So, if they object to that APR being severed, well, they ought to step up their plate and buy it because they shouldn't hold up the town Dalton because an APR extension. That's their problem, not ours. But anyways, the talk I had with the DAR folks, they were, they're not going to stand in our way or object, but they do have a right of first refusal. We'll see if we sell it or not.
Yeah.
Yeah, part of agricultural resources.
But they're the ones that initially halted the sale by the, by, by reasonable objections?
They're the ones who objected and then, and the auctioneer and our town council agreed to pull it from, it was on the auction block.
Yeah.
We pulled it off the auction block because the last minute they objected and council said.
Know that, they're the ones that objected.
They're the ones that objected.
Okay, so we pulled it.
We pulled it.
And the result didn't get sold.
I felt, thought it had been sold and then let state deal if they wanted to.
We all set on it?
Yes.
Okay. Let's move along to the town manager updates. We have the EverSource transmission line in Anthony Road, the sewer system evaluation survey, Green Communities grant, the streetlight, well, we may or may not definitely affect their session.
Yeah. So, the first part of this is a complaint I received from Steve Sears about the EverSource's replacing the transmission lines along this transmission corridor and they're using Anthony Road. He was concerned about the damage that the heavy trucks might be doing to Anthony Road. And I got in touch with EverSource and I actually got in touch with, I spoke with two different people there who told me that they take a look at the road, they photograph the road before they start, they photograph it when it's done, and then if there's any significant damage, they try to settle the town on the damages that are done. He told me that the work that they were doing, the heavy trucks ran at the end of this month, but there'd be continued work on the transmission line, I think through the end of October, they'll be restoring it, and there'd be some additional work next year. So, they seem very cooperative. John and I took a look after we went to the site visit and I didn't notice any particular damage.
Did, no, I, I couldn't, I couldn't see any damage to the paved surface nor to the dirt surface, so we drove all the way up to where they have, to the power lines and looked at this.
And the EverSource tells me they were in touch with John roughly prior to the project starting as well, whatever was going on. I've asked him for a report. So, if there are no questions about that, I'll move on to the SSES update. So, again, just to remind you, that's called the sewer system evaluation survey and that's the follow-on study after the infiltration and inflow analysis. Now, the infiltration inflow analysis gave us general information about where the water, the infiltration inflows coming into our sewer system. The SSES will pinpoint those locations and then give us a capital improvement plan for fixing the pipes that water's getting into that doesn't belong there. We're not quite done with the INI study because we remember last September, I think it was, we got a list of 16 questions answered by DEP. And the questions were so specific and extensive, we had to reengage time and help us answer those questions. Critical piece of it is an operating and maintenance plan for our sewer system and that is mandated by the permit that DEP and EPA gave to the city of Pittsfield, which we weren't generally aware of because Pittsfield didn't make us aware of it. But it's in there and we have to do it and that's the most extensive part of this. That should be done sometime towards the end of this year. And then the idea would be if we want to move to the next part of the SSES, then that would go in our capital improvement plan for next year.
Ken, one question. This company's going to give us a capital improvement plan for the sewer system. Is it going to include a approximate cost?
Oh, sure, yeah. The SSES will pinpoint and they should give us the cost and we have to work out the details.
And when do you expect to have that?
That would be an appropriation, our capital improvement plan for next year.
No, but when do you expect to have this documented with the plan of the engineering company?
Well, that won't, the operating and maintenance plan, so it's part of the INI study, that should be done by the end of this calendar year.
Yeah.
And then that builds into the SSES and that's a capital budget appropriation for the next year. Of course, that all fits our score.
I was just going to say, that's just adding on to the Pittsfield thing too, yeah.
Yeah.
I can only imagine what that, what our, what our end it was going to cost. No, Pittsfield, but it's just our own, our own system.
Well, the SSES alone could be a couple of hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Okay. Last thing I had is some very good news on the Green Communities grant. We have been awarded this Friday afternoon, $238,726. And I went back and I looked a little bit at the application, that is the amount of money that we had asked, or I think for the LED streetlight program, asked for some additional money for the town insulation program. We weren't awarded that. The maximum amount we could be awarded under this grant round was $250,000, so it would be darn, darn well. So, we'll be moving forward with this and we need to talk a little bit. There's a communication here from the chairman of the Green Committee. Because it involves the acquisition of the streetlights, it's a confidential discussions we probably want to have because it's a, it's a strategy for which to approach EverSource, we probably want to hold that particular discussion after the executive session. But this is good news and we can move forward with it. I didn't have time, we've actually accepted the grant tonight, but didn't have time to put that documentation together.
Oh, we'll have a resolution?
Yeah, yeah. But if you would authorize me to go ahead and sign again the grant contract if we can get that, that moving, the typical grants and this.
Make a motion, we allow Ken to sign the grant for the Green Committee.
Grant contract?
Grant contract with the state for this particular grant.
Second that.
Motion's made, seconded, sir. Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Absentions?
Great work, I'm glad that.
It was great work and I, I know Richard Paul was the main person who did a lot of that work for us and we really have a, we owe the debt of gratitude to the Green Committee for, the Dalton Green Committee.
And Richard Dave did a lot of work in this.
Yeah, and they get, get this through and push that on. Actually, of course, the Dalton Green Committee first got us to be a Green Community, which was a requirement, I believe it was a requirement that we have a Green Committee in order to get this grant.
Thank you. Is there anything you wanted to add, Richard?
No.
Wanted to be recognized on this section, that's all.
I mean, Rebecca was, Rebecca Flick was really helpful in getting it done on time. Ken's absence was a little off, so, yeah, it was a good team effort. I did have one comment because I know you're going to do the other piece in executive session, you're going to need me to stay for that.
Okay. You all second?
Yes.
Okay. Well, for items for future agendas, we have the one, which is the developing a sewer billing policy. We'll add that to our, our list, so we did the SSES, take that off. The proclamation for designating Dalton as a safe and acceptable community, I'm going to take that off for the time being. I'm not sure how we will handle that in the near future, but I'll do something with that. Anthony Road repair, I'm going to take that off as well. So, going down, going down the list, does anyone have any updates for me at this point in time?
You know, on the master plan?
Yes.
Maybe we could schedule it in September, the first meeting or whatever.
That's up to you.
September would be good. I think, well, I see that we're going to have quite a bit to do before that on other, other items.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine. That's good. And your idea for that, you're going to?
I want to go through, yes, you know, that these are some suggestions, they're not necessarily good ones, but there are some suggestions for cost savings, but there also are some other items that they said that we should have.
We need to do.
We need to address and, and those probably would be more expensive.
Okay.
But they did have a timetable, the certain things should be done in the first three years, some five years. We would obviously focus on the first three years since two years have gone by. Some of them are done.
Well, that'll be good to know.
Yes.
Okay. Remarks? This is select board. Robert?
What's going on with Old Windsor Road and why hasn't it only had one coating? Because a lot of people are complaining they're losing tires and stuff, or manholes, I mean, got orange paint around them or anything. I mean, I took a ride up there the other night because I wanted to see for myself, it's like, wow, so.
Let me find out.
Yeah, because, I mean, school's starting pretty soon, it won't be long. Football practice and soccer's going to be starting up there, but it's like a minefield going up through there.
My guess is that they're concentrating on their other, other project, which is Dalton Avenue Road. Could be, just a guess.
It was kind of like unacceptable.
Yes, I understand, I understand what you're saying, it should be done if it's just, if it's just a finished.
How long ago they put their first foot out?
They might have something to do with the sidewalks too. I noticed that the sidewalks look like they're going to need some.
Part of it fell apart by what color?
Yes, yeah.
That's your color.
So.
I think the water department was doing something up in that area.
Were they?
Yeah, they were doing something up there prior to the paving job, so they're working on over in that area.
I wonder if it's, that may be the issue.
Mr. Chairman, just to add that to the items for future agendas and I would be mindful to get a report from my guest.
Well, they're definitely jumping back for the taco.
Oh, they got to do it.
Yeah.
I don't know the details.
I talked to John the other day about that, better vintage tray, I think. And I don't know what, I didn't ask him what time, what date. I said, are they coming back? And he says, yeah, that's just the way they scheduled it. Was it LB?
LB, yeah.
So, it's going to be, it's coming, but.
I'd be interested to see what their logic is on it.
Well, we'll, we'll discuss it at the next meeting, we'll do it on, we'll do it on our very next meeting if it isn't done by them, could, it may be done by them.
If you're doing two coats, sometimes.
If you're doing two coats, sometimes it's suggested that you let the first coat settle for a while.
How long will they put that on?
Sometimes they like to let you leave it settle over the winter before they put the top coat on. By then that stuff will be feasible.
We'll discuss this next meeting, guys. Okay. We'll discuss it next meeting. Okay, any other further remarks from the board?
I'd like to say one thing. We're doing that license transfer.
Yes.
For the restaurant, the liquor license. I don't wanna say he didn't know what he was talking about, the attorney, but that license was created, for this is for the variety store, I'm sorry, not the restaurant. That license was created by special legislation. I think you were on the board then?
Oh, I know.
Yeah, I was on the board.
But I think what he, well, again, we can't, we can't discuss this, but.
Well, I understand what you're saying.
I understand what you're saying.
He's playing, he's unaware of the ramifications of that.
We have a duty to inform them.
We did, so that's it.
And we know the stipulations of that liquor license, as they were set, we should.
I know one of them, it can't be transferred physically from that location.
Ken, do we have that information?
Probably.
Is it filed with the?
It should be filed.
With the, with the license?
Should be. It's probably part of the legislation.
Well, we should have it. Why don't, I'm gonna put that down.
Yeah, it was only a couple of years ago.
Anything else? Okay, announcements. Pilled office hours by appointment in the select board office and town hall. For further information, please call 413-684-6111, extension 11, or my home phone number of 413-684-2526. Veteran agents' office hours are Wednesday from 8:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. at Town Hall, and 11:40 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. at the Senior Center. Did I say Wednesdays? It is on Wednesdays, those hours. Services for Dalton veterans are now available Monday through Friday through the North Adams Veterans Services Department at 413-662-3040. Public Power is a town supplier for municipal electrical aggregation program. You will see the name as a supplier of electricity on your EverSource bill unless you have another supplier. To opt in or out of the program, go online to colonialpowergroup.com/dalton or call Public Power at 1-800-830-2944. The Conservation Commission is looking for new members. If interested, please contact the town manager's office at 684-6111, extension 11. Please note Dalton's official meeting postings, agendas, and minutes can be viewed at mytowngovernment.org/01226. State Representative Paul Mark holds office hours at Dalton Town Hall, 462 Main Street, Callahan Room on Tuesdays from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., with the exception of the third Tuesday of each month. On the third Tuesday, office hours are 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Town Hall and from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Dalton Senior Center. You can reach his office at his district number, which is 413-464-5635. The Building Inspectorate Office hours are Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Tuesdays, 8:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. I declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body.
I move we go to executive session and not return to open session to conduct a strategy session in preparation for negotiations, non-union personnel, and litigation to consider the purchase and value of real property.
I'll second that.
Motion is made in seconds or any discussion? We'll call both. Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Hollis?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Stroud?
Yes.
We are in adjournment for three to five minutes.